All right.
Thank you all, you guys.
We're live now. Hi. Hey, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley. Today, we are joined by founder Greg Kilway. Hello. We also have on our team Colin and Julie here. You guys know them, love them, always helping you out with all the good stuff. And we have a special guest today, Mercedes Tomage, who is going to be sharing some really, really, really cool stuff with you guys today. But I want to give everybody a chance to kind of start coming on and, you know, tuning in. It's just a couple of minutes past the hour here. So as you guys are coming in, you know that we are talking about bundles today. Tell us what you are most excited to do with these bundles. Today, we're going to be talking about how to put bundles on your Get Oiling site. And this also kind of answers a popular question that we get as well. There's a, there's a new app that people have been using for a few months now called Life Steps. And, you know, there's a question of, you know, do I need this or do I need Get Oiling? Or, you know, how do I use this with that and all that kind of stuff? One of the things you're going to see today is actually how Mercedes uses that app and the bundles together. But if you have any questions, by the way, whether it's about bundles or these apps and all this fancy stuff, or if you just need help with something and you're here today looking for help, please go ahead and put your questions in the Q and A. Our chat gets a little bit wild, a little party in the chat. So definitely want to make sure that we get to all of your questions. So add those to the Q and A if you need help. We do have two live website reviews that we will do today after a quick announcement from Greg about a feature update and Mercedes showing us how to actually get this bundle thing done on your website. So Greg, I'm totally springing this on you so I could screen share this if you want. But this is a thing that's live in our system right now, right? Like the landing page changes that we've just made.
It absolutely is. No, that's all right. I can totally demo these changes. Yeah. So let me share my screen quick. This went out just yesterday. Let's see, is this going to work? Are we seeing the screen? I need Mercedes' cool little tech thing that she's going to show a little bit. Don't want to give it away, but anyway. So yeah, the landing page editor got some upgrades yesterday, which are really nice, I think. So there's more visual selection to landing page. If you remember, there used to be a little dropdown here that said like, you know, blank style one, blah, blah, blah. It was this huge list of possible landing pages and you had to like poke through them one at a time to figure out which one actually made sense for what you're doing. Now, when you click this create new landing page button, it shows you a little preview of what it is essentially, you know, these blank ones and categorizes them. So here's some short forms. There's some longer landing pages. And then all the pre-made ones are down here too. So these are all the built-in ones that you can take and modify and just like kickstart what you're doing with that. So yeah, you can pick any of those. This one here, I mean, for those of you who knew our recommendations, this was called Blank Style 9. This is now a simple short form. It's one of our favorites because it's so clean and simple and just really easy to put things together. But what I'm going to do, I'll pull up one of these that's pre-made because it actually has a few more options on it, just to show you that. But there's been some changes that I don't know if I'll necessarily be able to demo that here with mobile. Let me shrink this down a little bit. It might work. Yeah, it's not really small enough for mobile. But anyway, so it works better on a mobile device. If you're running any other curiosity, certainly let me know. I think if I ironed out a lot of the kinks there. But one of the big changes here is now the settings button has some more options. It's been split into two, kind of like the page editor. And there's more options here in this little dropdown. So if you click on this little thing, you can change the background image if you have it. Not all landing pages let you do that, but you can change the background image. That's the same as before. But what's new here now is you can make a copy of this landing page right from here. Previously, you could only do that from the list. Like if I go back here to the list of landing pages, you can copy it here or you can delete it here. Those were the only places you could do that. But now you can do that right here. If you're working on a page, you're like, man, I need to make a copy of this. Click this, give it a name, it'll make a copy. You can also delete it right from here. For some reason, you want to do that. And then kiosk mode is another thing that was only available through this landing page list. Now, if you happen to click on the landing page, you can just pop it open in kiosk mode. We have a whole training on that, but essentially that's what kiosk mode is. It puts up a landing page you can use for in-person vendor events where you have registration. The landing page never goes away, but people can register on it. So it's great to have a little computer set up there. If they want to, you know, register for a prize, you're going to give away something like that. Yes, mode is an awesome little feature, but now you can do it right through here. And let's see, some of the other little changes. This one is a little bit big. You can now either show the phone field. So if I uncheck phone, you can see phone disappears from the box down here. A lot of people who, you know, who requested this, many, many requests over the years. Like so you could use to, you know, make it not required, but some people didn't even want to show it at all, which makes a lot of sense. So that's a small but big one. And then also now, after you register, you used to be able to only choose between like the homepage and a URL. Now you can actually choose from one of your custom pages. So you don't have to go like open a new window and find that custom page and view it and copy and paste the URL. Now you can just come right in here and click on whatever page that you want them to go to after they've been, after they sign up and hit done. The other advantage of this is if you're using the resource sharing, then if you have a landing page, it'll automatically bring that page over in the resource bundle and connect it to the landing page. So the person who's getting it doesn't have to do the steps. So it's a huge, huge time saver over there. Yeah, I think, I think that's the highlights. Pretty exciting stuff. I think it works better on more devices now. And there's a couple of nice little features there too.
I'm muted. Hi. Thank you, Greg. Those are really exciting changes. I know some of these have kind of, you know, been in the pipeline for a while. So let us know if you're excited to use these landing pages. If you have any questions about them, feel free. This is a great time to ask, get answers, get context. Now, without further ado, I would love for our friend Mercedes to come and chat a bit. I'm going to switch over to our speaker view here so that we can actually see what you're doing. Because you have some, like, you've got levels of cool stuff to share with us today. So first, welcome Mercedes. Tell us a little bit about you.
Okay, so a little bit about me. I have been oiling for a year and I've pretty much been doing the business for about the same. It didn't take long for me to go from PSK to brand partner. I was going to share it and I think immediately I used Get Oiling right away. Get Oiling was one of those things that like, as soon as I saw it, I knew like, this is how I streamline the business that I one day will have. So, um, but personally, like I'm from Michigan. I live in Georgia. I have a dog. I'm married. I'm 31. That's pretty much all of it right there.
You're also doing really cool work. You've, I think we had you on for a website review a while back. You're creating a member area. You've been, you've been really kind of doing the thing with Get Oiling, like to the fullest extent, like just doing really cool stuff. So we were really excited when, I think Greg, you were in a group on, on social media. And there was a conversation that was being had about, about the, with the Life Steps app, right? And, and you were like, oh, I use that with Get Oiling. And so we were like, whoa, we need to hear about this. And so we did a call, you guys, me and Mercedes, like last week or the week before. And, and you've, you've got like this whole thing prepared. You're like, I got five ways. I'm going to show you these five ways. And I'm going to see, I'm going to save the best for last. And guys, this best for last, I was like, could we just do that? Like, and just put this here, because I want you guys to see this. Mercedes, can you tell us a little bit, just to kind of give context here? You're putting bundles, right? So for, for those of you who, I mean, we all know that there's bundles now, right? Like you can make your own bundles. You can customize your own bundles using MYYL, right? So you're putting those bundles onto your Good Oiling site, right?
Yes, correct. Yes. Do you want me to expand? I don't know.
You know, how, how are, how are you using them? Like when you're thinking about maybe setting one up, like just tell us, walk us through that. And then, yeah, of course, we want, we want to see it.
Something that, for me, this in itself is worth the $9.99 or $9.95 a month, right? MyYL, the only thing that you can actually create custom bundles and then create a Young Living link that will direct your potential customer directly to a pre-filled cart. So that's what's super awesome about MYYL. And they have that opportunity to create bundles. So this is kind of where the Life Steps app comes in. Life Steps is known for having a wellness assessment and then wellness boxes that correlate with the result of your assessment, right? So they have actually pre-curated a plethora of bundles with all the products that match a specific need. So when you take those bundles, Life Steps already put together and then you make a link with it, it's just, it's mind blowing when it comes to like what you can offer your customers when it comes to like streamlining. You figure out exactly what they need and you can literally send them to a cart with products. And all they have to do is hit click checkout and like they're good. There's no searching. There's no item numbers. There's no being overwhelmed. So that is how I've been using it. I can go ahead and show if it's a good time.
Yes, 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 absolutely. So you're, and just so we're clear here, this, this Life Steps app, you're basically using the bundles that they create as a sort of a framework or a guideline to actually create things on your Good Oiling site using MYYL, right? The MYYL link.
Yeah, definitely. I would say like, um, the Life Steps in the MYYL make like the bundling possible. And then the Get Oiling is the link that connects those to your potential customers. Because otherwise you would just have these unique bundles and link, but like no way of getting them to them. So I can show you guys kind of how this works. And let me just share my screen. The very first thing that you would need to do then is to take all that information and put it on one of your Get Oiling pages. So here, I'll do this right here. So this is a page that I actually have currently, um, obviously on the Get Oiling. So these are the curated bundles that Life Steps has provided. And this is only just some of them. So you have everything from like a stress box to women's health, to refresh your home, reproductive, nervous system, fitness, muscular skeletal. And when you create this page with these boxes, this is where the YL link comes in handy. So you're offering these on your Get Oiling, but then when you make the link with YL, you're able to select or create a button with that MYYL link. And then they're going to be directly taken over to a cart full of those products that you've already gotten ready for them. So you know, by talking to your customer, you know, by talking to your customer, okay, they really need to work on their nervous system, right? So you already have a box ready for nervous system. You already have a link created. They can go to your Get Oiling page, click on that nervous system box, go straight to Young Living and check out with the products that match them best, which is what's super awesome. What's really cool too, if we go back here, you can utilize your Life Steps bundles individually, but you can also go ahead and create the link here. If you go to see more wellness boxes, you're going to see all of the wellness boxes. This is actually the Life Steps app itself. So they can actually see all of the boxes that are available to them, the products that match them based on their needs. So that I would say is like the step one. Should I pause?
Yeah, so just a recap there. So you're, you're using three things, right? You're, you're using Get Oiling. That is actually the main conduit for sharing. These links are going to a page on your Good Oiling site. You are using, and it looks like the thing that's on the page. Because you did, you did actually have a link on your page that goes off to a full page on the Life Steps app, which you also have, which is also, I don't know, like 10, 10 bucks a month or something like that, right? It's, it's similarly priced to MYYL. I don't know as much about the Life Steps app, but when we chatted before, what I thought was particularly interesting was that the, when you're creating these bundles on your page, you had pictures of those. You didn't make those yourself, right?
No, no, I did not. Those are actually taken from the Life Steps app.
So you're actually treating the Life Steps app like your content provider. In this case, the images and the copy for these bundles that you want to put on your Good Oiling site. And then you're using your MYYL to create a bundle and link it there. And there you go. So for those of you who had questions about like, how do I use the Life Steps app with Get Oiling? Think of them as a content partner, a content provider. Yes, they've got all this stuff that's written and they've got these images. So yes, let's please continue. Are you guys loving this? Please let us know in the chat. Like ask your questions if you got them, keep them coming.
Yeah, it's kind of like taking up a little piece of that you have and turning them into one big, amazing, simple offer for your customers. And it is called the, it's Life Steps is the app. And this is what's even cooler. I'm not sure if you guys remember, but Get Oiling actually had a live. And I think it was Simple Grace Collective. They had a Linktree wannabe a couple of months ago. I don't know if you guys remember, but you all see Linktree, but you don't need a Linktree because Get Oiling can do it for you guys. So just really take advantage of everything that Get Oiling has to offer. And let me show you what this means. So now we have the bundles, right? We have the links. We have the page created. But now we have to get them to our, our customers, our potential customers. And this is where Get Oiling comes in again. So I utilize Instagram for the most part. But we all know we have a link in our bio, right? It's the new thing to do. So if we go to our link in our bio, I'm going to click on it and it's going to take me to this Get Oiling page. This looks like Linktree, but it's not. This is a Get Oiling page. But they actually gave the Canva template to us for free, which is amazing. So this is free to do. Get Oiling made it happen. And right at the top, there's a starter bundle. And if I click that starter bundles, it's going to take me straight to the page that I created in my Get Oiling account for my customers. So my customers are on my page. They go, they click the link in my bio and the very first thing they see is starter bundles. They click on it and they see all of these options that they can choose to match them in their needs. But also I'm able to say, call me, contact me for a one-on-one. We can figure out what you need. They can see all the bundles that are possible. So it's pretty much like an amazing storefront that just gives everything that you have to offer in a super simple and easy to comprehend way without sending them like 10 or 15 links or some like ghetto little like thing you just made up really quick and that copy and paste from whatever you have in your phone, right? Saving your photos. So it's just like, hey, I have this to offer you. And I actually had someone today contact me and say, I think I need to work on my nervous system. What? So I said, go to link in my bio, click starter bundles, check out the nervous system box, look it over. And then I'm going to send you a little bit of information because with Life Steps, they also have a little guide for each box that you can send to them. So there you go.
Content.
It's a big picture.
Yep, content. I love it. I love it. And so, so you're out there in the world, just so you guys again, get the, get the big picture here. So Mercedes is out there just doing everything on social, being awesome, living with a dog in Georgia. And people are like, hey, you know what? You talk about this thing. I think I need help with that thing. And you're like, link in bio, that's a Good Oiling page. We did a weekly work session on this and you can have the Canva template that she used too. It's all there. It's free for you guys. So, so they go to your link in bio in your, your, your Insta. You say, go, go click starter bundles. That goes to a Get Oiling page where you have used from the Life Steps app, pictures of different bundles that they have. You have connected those to bundles in your MYYL, right? And that's all linked on a Good Oiling page. So she can go click that bundle. Now it's in her cart. She can check out or you can have a call with her or whatever, like she's, it's ready to go, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, sick and cool. You guys, how cool is this? How cool is this? There's definitely some questions in here, like I'm, I don't really know much about Life Steps. I know that like there, there are a little bit, there's some overlapping pieces with what we do and what they do. But there are questions here, guys. If you have very specific questions like about how that app works, that's not like, we're not, we're not really the people. But, um, you know, if you're uplines using it, then absolutely. MYYL is how you're making the actual bundle links though, right? When they eventually from your page, click a link to a bundle and go off to, to the Young Living site, that is a MYYL link, right?
Yes, the ability to take a product and create a link that connects to your cart is, that is a MYYL only thing. And I did, I had someone ask me, I do use the Pro, the Life Steps Pro that gives you access to the wellness assessment as well as the bundles. And you can build bundles however you want. You don't have to utilize. I'm using Life Steps as like a template for all of these different bundles I'm building. But if you have a specific, I've also created recently, I use MYYL to create a custom bundle for someone who had a very specific need. I researched it, made the suggestions, created a link, sent it to them. And they had all of those suggestions right there so they could click and check out if they chose to. But yeah, that, that ability is MYYL. To my knowledge, it's, it's MYYL only, that ability.
Yeah, I mean, it plugs straight in with the Young Living website and codes to you and everything. Like you would need to, like the main need here is MYYL for those bundles. And you've got, and I think this was sort of the revelation, right? Because I think when a new business tool shows up in this space, there's instantly sort of like a comparison, like Get Oiling versus this or versus that or whatever. And quite often we're, we're just dramatically different in what it is that we do. And there's really nothing else that does like the scope of what Get Oiling does. But when you, when you were sharing for like this, this Life Steps thing, basically looking at them, because there's, there's free. I mean, you could get that for free, right? There's a free level with Life Steps, right?
There is a free level. Yeah, you don't have that type of thing, but there is.
Yeah. And so there's, there's content in there that you can use on your website in your member area, right? Like you get access to those things. So, so if you think about all of this, I mean, obviously there's different pieces of investment in your business, depending on where you're at. You know, you're going to have a, you know, a Get Oiling level depending on where you're at. The MYYL is, and again, like this, they just rolled this out in the US. We just had a call with our friends at Grow Workspace about this yesterday. So like there's, there's still some kinks and I don't, it's not rolled out globally. I think it's one market at a time. But for those of you who want to get started doing this, Mercedes, would you be open to kind of showing like behind the scenes? Like what is that sort of like page look like? Like the page that you made with your bundles and sort of like where you have the images and what you linked and stuff? Just to kind of walk people through, because you're, you're super, super savvy. I think it'd be helpful for people to kind of see what you're doing.
I feel like I should say this. There's 64 people with us today. And I've been on the conversations too on Facebook where people have been frustrated, right? And we've, we've all seen the comments where it's like, it's tough. You guys, like, I feel like I should just say, like, I am that person whose husband was like, maybe we should just stop. Because when I initially started using all these tools, I was overwhelmed. Okay? I did not, I am not a tech person. I did not take any tech classes. I'm not computer savvy. I am, I've never designed a website. So if you are at that point right now on your oiling journey where you're using Get Oiling and you're overwhelmed, like it's okay. There are, it's totally doable. I was that person who spent eight hours trying to figure out how to edit one word and like ended up at the end of the day, like eight hours later with nothing. So like, it, it is, it is easy. I swear. It gets, it is easier. Like the first time it seems overwhelming, but just follow their advice and set one goal and just follow their instructional videos. Set one goal, do one thing, follow the video. Don't try and do your whole, don't try, like, don't try and do all of it at the same time. But, um, I just felt like I should say that, like, I'm one of those people. Like I didn't go to school for this. I didn't go to school at all, actually. So I'll show you, um, here. Um, so this is my custom, is this what you mean, like my custom pages? So then if I go into my bundles page, right here's the third one down. So this is, this is the view you were hoping for so they could kind of see exactly the way it's, okay. Well, all I did, you can, look, I use everything out of the box, Get Oiling. My landing page is out of the box. My, everything is out of the box. And as much as this doesn't look like it is, it is. This is just the template. When you go into create a page, there's a photo template, you guys, where there's either two, four or six photos. And I just chose photo templates and threw my pictures in there. All the paragraphs and the photos and the buttons, they were already there in a template. And all I did was just change the wording or the photo.
And you grabbed the wording and the photo from the app, right?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Like figure out what to say. You just got content from the Life Steps app and you put it here on your page.
Yeah, I did. It was really, really easy. I promise. So if I like, and then I'm trying to think if I, if I go to add CDs right here where it has like, at the top, if you click photos, these options, this is what I utilize for the most part, just pictures. That's it. And if I wanted to add a button, I could. Or if you see these choices here in the middle, they have the three photos. There's a paragraph on the top. There's a button on the bottom. So I literally just hook these templates, this three column template with a header or without a header that Get Oiling already offers, and I just slid my own photos in.
That's amazing. And then, and then you're just clicking on a photo and just swapping it with the one that you grabbed off of the app, right?
Absolutely. Yep.
I love it. Oh, I love it. That's so cool. There's, there's actually some questions in here. I don't know. Leah was asking which videos Mercedes that you were referring to. She says she struggles with all the things too. Probably our YouTube channel. I mean, we, I mean, we're, we're here every week. We do this every week. We're here for you. I think you, you learned, you learned here on Thursdays, right?
I watch a lot on replay because I'm busy on Thursdays. I, I'm here live like once or twice. Um, and like, the replays are great. And the thing is, is like, don't look at your entire website. Choose something that you've seen from Get Oiling, something that you've seen on their YouTube or on their Facebook or something that somebody utilizes and say, I want that. Find the training video because it's out there and watch it and watch it again and watch it again. And it just choose one thing. I want to work on my Linktree in my bio. Just do that. I want to work on my landing page. Just do that. But there are definitely the videos available, whether it be on their replays on Facebook or their YouTube.
I love it. I love it. Thank you. You're so awesome for sharing all of this today. All right. Is there anything else? I mean, obviously there's some questions. Actually, hold on. Let me see, because I
One question regarding Canva. So the little pictures that look like little Polaroids that have like a stamp, that was that, the, the background, the picture of the product. The picture of the product with the white background is Life Steps. The little stamp in the Polaroid is Canva.
Okay, so you took the image off of the Life Steps app for each bundle that you wanted to put on your Good Oiling site. You kind of made it your own. It's optional, but you made it your own in Canva. And then you added that to the page there. That's so cool. All right. Is anything else that you want to share? I don't know. I want you to have the floor here like for longer because you, you share such great stuff. And it's so exciting to see what you're doing. Because guys, I mean, you know, you could hear me, you know, run my mouth every week and I do. But, you know, Mercedes is doing what you're doing right now, right? Like you're, you're out there, you know, you're out there building the business, sharing, showing. So being able to see what you're doing is just invaluable.
And too, like, I don't know if it helps anybody, but I only have 300 followers on Instagram. So I don't want anyone out there to look at me and be like, oh, she must have like 25,000 to do this, you know? She must have like this huge team. I'm seeing your star. And I have 24 people on my team and like 300 Instagram followers. So like, they're not huge. So you do not have to be big. Utilize Get Oiling. You can run your business like a diamond when you're a star. And Get Oiling definitely, definitely can help you to do that. So I just wanted to make sure everyone out there knew, like, I'm not one of those, okay?
Yeah, no, that's, thank you for your candor, which, you know, is also your brand. So, right? I love that. Um, so yeah, is there anything? It just, I don't know. Let's see if there are any questions. Just please make sure you guys, if you have questions for Mercedes or for us, that you put them into the Q and A so that we don't miss them in the chat. In terms of a walkthrough of the process, the workflow is like, let's, let's kind of talk through the workflow here. So you've got the Life Steps app. That's where you're getting the verbiage. That's where you're getting the images of the bundles, right? So on the phone, on the computer, like what are, so you're on the computer and you're like logged into your Life Steps?
Yeah. So let's, let's go, I can go through like a really brief synopsis of the actual process, right? So you have Life Steps app. You go to Wellness Boxes, like I showed you guys. And you are going to select, here, I'll show you. So you go to your Life Steps app and you look at all of the wellness boxes, okay? You're in the Life Steps app, you're looking at the wellness, wellness boxes and you're thinking, which ones do I want to offer to my customers, like right off the bat? What do I think I need to put right away for people to see? What do you think the main needs on them? Okay. Then you say, I say energy is one of them. You're going to go into Life Steps. This is Life Steps and you're going to scroll down and it's going to have three different versions of them. And if you look at this, it's going to have every product and every item number. So then you're going to be like, okay, here's Life Steps. Here's a box that I want to go ahead and present on my page. Um, I'm going to, sorry, guys, I'm freaking out. So you're like, okay, I have this. I have this box. I want to offer this box. So then you're going to go to MYYL. It's so simple. And you're going to say, create bundle. You're going to create the bundle and you're just going to take all these little item numbers and type them in, enter, type it in, enter, type it in, enter. And boom, you're done. So now you have a link with all of these products. So just take your boxes, create your links to all of your boxes that you like. And then when you're done, you go to your Get Oiling, create a custom page with tons of photos. And then just whip a photo of every single bundle that you just made. And then you copy every single one of those links and just put it in a button. So that's it. So pick your bundles, create your links, and then you make it look pretty in a way you can offer it to your customers using Get Oiling.
I love it. Just for, for clarity as well, I think would be important. For, for folks who don't know, the Life Steps app, like those bundles on that page, that's something for your members. They can add those to their ER order, right? But if you're wanting to kind of put bundles on the front end to, you know, for people who are prospective, prospective customers, that's really the purpose of this, right?
Yes. So Life Steps intentions are for, to, to encourage your current customers to download Life Steps, take the wellness assessment, and then be able to encourage them with what to put on their, their subscribe to save next month, right? So that's their intentions. And, and from the app, you can add it to your order, your personal order. Because you use your personal member ID to sign up for Life Steps, right? So what I did, and I was like, these are amazing. People don't only need these after they become a customer. They need them before. Especially now that all the kits are gone and they can come up with their own kind of starter bundle at 100 PB. So that's what I did. These are intended for like suggestions for your next ER or for your current customers. I just took them, I just rewound it a little bit and, and placed them at the front of the consensus for people.
I love it. That's so cool. I mean, you're just basically, you're, you're recreating this, but making it customer facing. It's genius. All right. So we have a bunch of questions for you. I don't know how many of these we'll be able to answer, you know, especially where we're talking about using other services. Like my Y L, which is a Young Living offering, like that is Young Living's thing. You can sign up through that for that, I think through your VO or, or your, you have to, it's the same login as your VO to, to be able to actually use my Y L. So it's tied in in that way. Life Steps in this case, obviously, if it's something that you want to use, then, then there is an option there for you to get, like the copy is already made, the bundles are already put together, there's an image there. It's what you'd be offering your existing members. But if you wanted to be able to offer bundles to your people, it's sort of a shortcut. Kind of like using Grow Workspace or Modern Companion or Simple Grace is a shortcut to creating resources that you can use for different parts of your business. The Life Steps app is, is you're, you're using just like you would use Grow Workspace in this case. And yeah, yeah. So, so we actually did with Grow Workspace yesterday, a training. And they actually have one of your Grow Workspace Platinum last week on their office hours. They did a full like walkthrough of creating bundles with my Y L. So I don't know. I don't really know any, I, I've never played around with it. I don't know that we necessarily have time to do like a full demo of like using my Y L on our call today, but there's definitely some resources out there. And guys, and this is something that I said yesterday on the call with the, with Chrissy and those guys at, at Grow Workspace, was I don't even know what all my Y L does. Just the fact that you can, excuse me, that you can put bundles together to share with customers and have a cart ready for them to purchase is worth the, the price of admission. Like that's, that's a, it's a valuable tool. Use it in conjunction with your, with your calls, with your leads and do what Mercedes is doing here and connect it to your site. Such a great idea. All right. So Juliette, I don't remember what, which one of the trainings we did. Mercedes, do you remember what we might've been training on that day? That you had a website review with us? Because she's interested in seeing like what you've been doing on your Good Oiling site, seeing that site review.
Oh, my goodness. Um, no, I don't remember. I don't think that I was connected to like a certain theme. I think that I was just so new. I was just like, can somebody that knows what they're doing, look at this, please? And because I try to make all of my, all of my oily information accessible. So I do everything in English and in American Sign Language and everything is captioned. So I was just struggling trying to figure out, how do I put an English and a sign language video here simultaneously? I have no problem sending any of my pages out to anybody if it's possible. I don't know if you have to be a part of my member or, but I don't remember the, I don't remember the day.
Actually, here, I'm going to find this. That was, that was April 8th of this year. So if you want to find the weekly work session from April 8th of 2021, that was when you, that's when you were here. Thank you, Calendly. I did it. All right. So Juliette, hopefully we'll be able to find that link for you. All right. Does the free level of my Y L allow you to make bundles? Mercedes, do you know the answer to that?
At my knowledge, there is no free my Y L. So I could be wrong. But to me, like, if you sign up for my Y L, it's like an instant automatic transaction of $9.95 a month, I think.
I think Life Steps has a free version. I think that's what, yeah. So the Life Steps app, use it for content, use it for your members, you know, to the extent that you want to use it, there is a free version for that. And basically what we're talking about here today, like and how it factors in to putting these bundles on the site is that Mercedes, Mercedes is using the images and the copy like she would use images and copy from one of our content providers, like Y L Customer Delay, Modern Companion and Grow Workspace.
Yes.
Okay, this is, do you need the paid version of Life Steps to get all the content that Mercedes is using?
I would say yes.
Okay. All right. What else? Did you get the photos on the website version of Life Steps or on the phone app? How did you, how did you pull the, the photos off of, of the app?
Um, I do everything off, like off of my phone usually or my iPad. So I'll exit at my computer, but I'll have all of my apps on like my, my devices, like my phone. And then I'll like airdrop it if I'm creating my, my Get Oiling website. So I use, I don't, I think maybe I've been on their actual website once. I do everything with their mobile.
Okay. So you know, when you're, when you're on a phone, you can just hold down on top of an image and a menu will typically pop up. That's how you're going to grab that image if you're using the phone, just FYI. Yeah. So there's someone who asked like how successful this has been for you, like how many have clicked and enrolled? Maybe specifically talking about like the link in bio. You're not using that as sort of like an autopilot, like I sign people up because I have a link, right? Or just, does that happen? Or is it mostly conversations? What's it look like for you?
So I'm still so small. Like, I don't even know if I can say what my record has been.
Sure.
Yeah, like I'm so tiny, guys, like, um, but like I said, today, today I was able, it's, it's a great resource to, even if people are automatically going there and just like, you know, I'm not huge, you know, where people are just going to my link and signing up three or four times a month. You know, and I just get surprised, you know, I'm usually involved in the process because I'm at that point. But it's a great place to not just have people automatically do their thing without me, but it's a great place for me to guide people to. Like today, again, someone's like, I think I need to work on my nervous system. Okay. So go to the link in my bio, hit this, hit the nervous system box and check out those products. And then we can talk a little bit about it. It's, it, she went to my Get Oiling page like this. So it was a great resource to be able to pay people to and to utilize to educate and to refer people to without having to constantly repeat the same messages over and over and over.
Yes, yes, yes. So this is leverage. You're creating leverage in your business with these tools. None, none of this is a magic button, right? Like there's, maybe there are people who say, click the link in bio and buy the kit and people do it. But I think the most important thing, and, and I will, I'm, I'm a broken record on this, you guys. It's not duplicable thing. Go, go buy that. Like if you want them to eventually like want to share and do what you do, they're going to think that they need to do that thing, which was kind of a fluke, if we're being honest. They're going to think that they need to achieve this fluke thing to actually be successful at this, right? So it's conversations and that was it. Like somebody came to you, hey, I think I need help with this thing. You're like, I got a resource.
Right. And I had the resources. And I think it was also like, it's super important for people to be able to clearly window shop, okay? No brick and mortar store has newspaper and duct tape covering all of their entryway windows, okay? They're open. What you see is what draws you in. People need to be able to window shop Young Living, okay? And the way that we do that is by utilizing our Get Oiling. Get Oiling is my, my window shop. They have to be able to clearly see the options and the products available to them before they even reach out to me. So who knows how many people are looking at those bundles before they're actually committing, you know? You just have to offer them to clearly see what's available because if they go to the Young Living website, it's, it can be overwhelming. There are over 700 products. Okay, there's a ton of options. But if you utilize this and you create a page on Get Oiling that allows them to just clearly see your, your window, so to speak, right? Into your shop, your storefront to see, oh, okay, this is what I, I can choose from without being.
Hmm. Oh, I love that. There's a question. Can the wellness questions from the Life Steps app be shared on Get Oiling somehow for prospects or current customers? So what, what I would do, and again, I, I don't know how that functions. Like my understanding of the Life Steps app is that it's really helpful for existing members and less so a customer facing thing. If there's a link, right? If there's a link that goes to an assessment, then you could put that link on your Good Oiling site, right? So like you can have them click a link in an email and go fill that out. So there are ways to use this together. Like if there's a link, you can connect it to Good Oiling, right? Like you could, you can give them a, a link to click in an email, a link to click on a page in a member area, wherever that might be. Okay. Do you set up your my Y L bundles as subscribe to save as uneditable that goes directly to the order site?
Okay. So I, I think she understands what she's saying. So when you set up a link on my Y L, you have the option of adding a starter, a pre-existing starter bundle, like the P, what we once do is the PSK or such and such. The holiday bundle, the owl. And then you can select the cart and then you can select a subscribe and save suggestion afterwards. I don't like pressure. I don't pressurize my customers at all. And I also want them to see their options and not be stuck into a cart. So the other option Young Living offers is when you do create this bundle, you can send them to a locked in cart where they cannot adjust their items. So they either get all of it or they get none of it. Not a huge fan of that personally. I like people to be able to look at it all and be like, okay, let me pick two or three. So I don't lock my cart. So I don't do the pre-filled option. And I also don't do like the subscribe to save because I can't really recommend what they order next month. Not knowing what they're going to need next month. So I don't personally, I just leave it as simple as possible. Not locked in, no before, no after, just here's my suggestion.
Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect. I'm actually like over here trying to see if I could find the weekly work session that you were on, so I can share the link. All right. So.
Oh, you did.
I can, it's been pretty busy, so I'll paste it again here too.
All right, cool. Awesome. So Sherry asks, how do you actually send the wellness assessment to your team members? I found the boxes. I like to send the assessment to see what they think they need. I'm sure that Life Steps has like, you know, some, some training and resources on this. I would definitely recommend that you check those out. For sure. If you have that. Let's see, creating bundles in my Y L, that's something, maybe that's something that we could do on a future session. We do have a couple of, of, of website reviews to go over today as well. So yeah, we're, I don't know, we'll, we'll definitely take that into consideration for maybe a future, you know, walkthrough. All right. So Cheryl says, amazing, that helped a lot Mercedes, the walkthrough of what you did to create this. Could you explain again how you utilize this process to help people set up their essential rewards? Or is, at least give them ideas for their future essential rewards order? So like with a new person who could be signing up.
Okay. So there is an option when you do create the bundle to create a suggestion, a suggestion, a suggestion for their subscribe to save. So when you set up the link, you can also set up a suggestion for what they're going to get next month. I have yet to do that. And because it does send them, what I haven't done is sent a link like this to a current customer. So I guess it totally is possible. For example, like, okay, let me, sorry, I'm processing as I'm answering. This is terrible. Okay. So I don't offer the subscribe to save option, but you can. So you can totally connect and offer what to get next month when you create that link. When it comes to current customers, I just thought about this today, actually, before I joined on. I'm going to talk to my current customers and let them know that these bundles are available to them too, as they're subscribed to save. Or if they need a suggestion, what to order, you can definitely still send these boxes to a current customer or brand partner who needs help with a specific thing. And you can send them that same link or send them, I can send my current customers to the exact same page that I'm sending everybody else at. They're viewing it as a starter bundle. My current customers are looking at the exact same page as what do I get? So they're still capable of, of utilizing the link and utilizing the information exactly the same. So if my brand partners or my customers come to me and say, I've been struggling with this, I'm going to send them to the exact same Get Oiling page that I send to someone who's new that's struggling with the same.
I love it. I love it. Yeah. Because that's, because the my Y L bundle links are connected directly to Young Living. It knows if the person is a Young Living member, right? And so it's going to behave differently. That's, that's awesome. I, I love that they're doing this and I'm excited to see this expanding. I think it's a really great way to get people started in particular. All right. So Dana asked if your custom page that you use could be shared as a Good Oiling resource bundle. Well, that is a really cool idea where we're talking about utilizing third party content. It is really important that we honor the source there. So Mercedes is a paying member of the Life Steps app. And so she's using those resources, you know, and, and, you know, the context of the agreement that they have. So for us to share a page like this that already has that information there, it would need to basically be sourced completely from, you know, basically images that we not only have permission to use, but all of you have permission to use as well. So definitely recommend that you follow if you want to create something like this. Just kind of follow along with, with what she did. And you don't need to have every bundle that exists on, on a page, right? Just do three of your favorites or something like that. Grab the images. And guys, you could do this just with Get Oiling and my Y L also. If you just wanted to say, hey, this is my, and just make an image in Canva that says, this is my nervous system bundle. And then you list off the products in it and then just pop your my Y L link in there. Now, you know, you've, you, you can simplify that process further. There is definitely a benefit where you're talking about the window shopping, where if you're using images, pictures of the images and you're out on social and you're allowing people to kind of window shop, yeah, there's definitely a benefit there to have like company looking, you know, official looking photos of the products that are in the bundle, but it's not a make or break. Like you could totally just do this with Canva and just give it a name for the image and just make sure that you put that my Y L link on your page.
Absolutely. To be quite honest, the photos that I did grab, they're just white background products. You could probably take a better photo, honestly, if you want to put your time and create your products or create your own bundles.
I mean, my gosh, yeah, absolutely. If it's products you use, take a nice picture, right? And, and, and here's, you know, here's me with these products and like, you know, and use that as your picture, right? Let's see, Jen asks, since the Life Steps app is designed for current customers, do you find the info is compliant? Or do you need to edit it to be public? It's an interesting question. I mean, it's, what, do you have any thoughts on that? No idea.
So what's funny is the information that I do grab from, from Life Steps is usually, it's pretty basic. So like if you think about what I actually walked you guys through today, none of that Get Oiling page anywhere on it had any claims or it didn't talk about what it did or what you use it for or what it's good for, really. Like that's more like the one-on-one. When I communicate with her about that box later, after she's already looked at it and seen the box, that's where that kind of information comes in. And the Life Steps guide of how to use the products is usually just the how to use them daily, the product regimen. And I hadn't really come into any other issues. I use Life Steps and I, she knows, hey, this is only one way that I use Life Steps. There's tons of other ways and I utilize it all the time.
Yes. And, and we're going to have to get together and, and maybe talk about that again as well, because there's clear, there's tons of questions here about this. The guide, Linda, that, that Mercedes was talking about is something that is provided by Life Steps. So just like you would have a downloadable in a bundle from Grow Workspace, you've got a sway and a little download guide. They have those things. You can use Life Steps like a content partner for your Good Oiling site. Mercedes has a guide from, because all of those bundles that they have there that are intended for your members to be able to go and learn about and add to their ER order. You can grab those and use those on your Good Oiling site to provide supplemental information and all that kind of good stuff, which is cool. In terms of how Life Steps app with, works with your Y L member number and all of that, like, I, we're, we're not qualified to answer those questions here today. I will say, I, I think both of these apps do have a direct tie-in to the VO. Whereas we are independent and you can connect things to your Young Living site, like, you know, uploading your VO file and connecting with your people and everything. Got you, Linda. Yeah. So I am so glad that you guys have all these great questions today. Now, I do want to honor the time of people who are here for a live website review. So you guys, let Mercedes know how grateful you are and we are so stinking grateful for you to come and share this with us today. I hope you do it again. Thank you.
People feel free. I really don't mind. I don't have a, I don't have team support really. No one above me up until like four levels actually does the business. So I did this solo. So I understand the frustrations and I understand sometimes when it's like to try and figure it out solo. So care and candor is my name. And if you guys need help, I'm totally down. Young Living is one giant team. So if anyone needs help, I'm willing.
There was actually, I saw in the chat a while back here today that someone, I think maybe your name is Susan, if I'm remembering. You get together with other Good Oiling users and you guys talk about stuff and you share stuff. I know Jackie does this with her team and people who are in her team who use Good Oiling, but there are Team Y L groups like this who use Get Oiling. Obviously we have a Facebook group and, and we can all get together and share that information in there. But like, like, let's, let's take it there. Actually, y'all come to the Get Oiling Facebook group, right? It's facebook.com/groups, it's Get Oiling Online is the name of it. And just come, come find us. Mercedes is in there and, and we could share all this great information and these ideas there and keep this conversation going in the group. Thank you, Mercedes.
Hey.
I hope you'll come on again. All right. I hope you'll come on again. All right. So Kathy, I don't have your last name here on the sign up for this, but if you, Kathy, if you're here, you signed up for a website review today. Would you raise your hand for me so I can bring you out? I don't have your last name on the form. I there you are. Okay. Hi Kathy. You can unmute yourself and we can chat. Can you hear me?
I can't. Can you see me?
Can't see you, but I can hear you. How are you?
I'm fine. Let me see if I can get you or you can see me.
So I was, I was looking at the, the form that you had filled out. You were interested in creating lead magnets to get new customers. So do we, is there anything that you would like to kind of show and share? Or are we talking more strategy here today?
Strategy. I have joined like Mercedes a year ago and I've just, I started strong. I have seven people under me. But then, you know, the last year happened and I just haven't really got any momentum again. And like Mercedes, I am not really savvy with a computer. And I want to be, and I would love to do what she's doing. And I just need to know how to do these things. I haven't joined. I am on my Y L. No, I'm not. I apologize. I'm on the Life Steps. I want to join my Y L and just move forward.
Okay. So how are you meeting new people? Or are you meeting any new people?
I haven't recently. I use my products where, you know, the Young Living products whenever I can. I have a not a party. I'm sorry. That's not what they call it, a class scheduled. And I'm going to do it on thieves. And the only reason I haven't done it recently is the lady's so stressed right now. We're trying to get each other, we traded parties. She does Pampered Chef. And I told her I would do, she would do one for me if I did one for her. And that's how I hope to open up some doors. Yeah, we're doing that. And all I have to do is schedule. I've written up the party and all. I just have to schedule. I just haven't done it yet. Now it is.
Yeah, I guess. So, um, so what, what I would recommend, I mean, and this is going to be the case for anyone. And I know we are, we're a website and we're tech and we're all of these, you know, bells and whistles and fun things. But you know, if, if, if what you're wanting to do is create momentum and get that ball rolling. You gotta grow your network, right? And you've got to engage with your network. And there are ways to use us. And I think the most important way to use us in a momentum building phase is using the contact manager. And that is, you know, basically using follow-up plans to remind yourself to get in touch with people that maybe you had an initial conversation with, adding in any notes that they're sharing with you. And then just generally like knowing who it is that you want to be helping, right? Because we can say that Young Living can help everyone and anyone, which, you know, we would not be incorrect in saying that. However, if we show up, you know, and say, I help everyone, no one's really good. They can say, oh, that's nice. Right? But we need to know who first, who you really want to be focusing on meeting. And then ask yourself, where do they hang out? Right? So what, um, what do you love doing? Like what's your, what are your hobbies?
I like to quilt. I love to can. I can a lot of our produce that we grow in our yard. Of course grandchildren. Let me see what else. I like teaching people how to use products and how to make products. You know, not just have laundry soap, but make it two gallons of the laundry soap and enhance it to make your own hand soap, to make your own deodorant. That's what I do. I don't, I make my own deodorant. I do a lot of the face, you know, face products and things like that. And all my Yeah, I love that part. And I want to share that with others.
Okay. So use your good oiling blog for this. Take pictures of your process. So next time you make your laundry soap, take pictures of the process and then write out the process and put it there in a blog post. And, and just start building a sort of library of like, here's how you can make stuff and do stuff. And every time you create something new, you send it out. You, you post it on social. Go to places where you have like-minded with others. So if you're a part of, you know, of, of like, you know, knitting or quilting or sewing circles online. You know, like on social media, Reverend Paula, if you're here in the comments, let's talk about this. Paula's doing this. Paula, actually, let me share you a quick little story. I talked to Paula, Reverend Paula yesterday. And she is getting three to four new leads a day. A day, right? Is it a day or a week? Correct me if I'm wrong. She's getting a lot of leads. And you, you know what she put out there into the world? A pattern for clergy stall. And she shared that on Pinterest. And people are opting themselves in on a regular basis that she does not know from anywhere in the world. Because they want to get her clergy stall. Has nothing to do with oils. But she has an opportunity, once those people opt in, because they want this thing that she's sharing. Once people opt in, they have an opportunity to go into a group where there's fellowship and, and there's, you know, people of like heart and mind. And, and every now and then Paula will show up and talk about, you know, how she's passionate about the anointing practices in the Bible and the oils that she likes to use for it. And people who are interested in that, they can sign up, right? They could get started. They can attend a class. They could go through a workshop or something like that with her. So what you could do, you could repeat this process. I mean, it's really what good oiling is designed to do in one way, in, in a more passive and leveraged way is for you to just go do what you love and share it with the world. And then, you know, make sure that you're showing up where your people are hanging out and give them things that'll help them and let them know there's more where that came from. And then all roads from there just really lead to a one-on-one conversation with you where based on that conversation, you can offer them oils. Does that make sense?
It sure does. The problem I'm having, I can get people to sign up. No one wants E R subscribed to save anymore. I'll have them sign up for that and they stay on for a month or two, and then they just get off. And that's a problem I'm having. They don't want, they want to use the products. They want to do it, but they want me to order it for them. They don't want to be, you know, involved in any of the, the website and stuff like that. So that's a problem I'm having. I can keep growing myself that way, but I don't get people under me to grow my business.
Got you. So, so two things. Number one, keep growing yourself that way, right? So keep, keep going and keep going and keep going. Because that's, that's like, really the, the whole point of, of this business is to grow your network and to grow your net worth, right? Like we, we, we grow our network. We find more people. And, and yeah, some will, some won't. So what? It's okay. But we do want to serve the people who do show up. And what I want to connect you to, to this end, there's a training series that I just recently did with Jackie McLaughlin, who's a platinum in Young Living. And what I basically did was picked her brain for four sessions on the systems that she uses. And she's a super user with good oiling. On the system she uses for these different phases and how she runs her business. One of them is specifically about how you follow up with people. And then how that is in service of getting and keeping people on to, on a central awards. So we can put that link in the chat. It's Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash platinum. And it's free. It's a free training that's on her site. That's a good oiling built site. So, and, and we've definitely got some folks in here who are on that training when we did it live, who, who love it. He'll tell you that it's good. So if you're struggling with, with, with keeping people engaged, getting them onto product, there's chances are there are better questions that you could be asking in ways that you can be engaging with your person that can further reveal and help them see the value in making a commitment to their wellness, right? It's, um, it, it takes a mindset shift, a mindset shift in us, if I can speak today. To, to be able to really start to affect that change in others. So really recommend that training. So that is, I'm going to put that in our chat here. And I'll put it in the link below for the replay as well. That's Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash platinum. And that is a free for everyone in team Y L. And it's a four-part, all the replays, you'll be able to get access to are in there. So definitely recommend you check that out. So, um, so yeah, Kathy, what I would recommend that you do is maybe just make a quick list of, you know, things that you think that you'd like to be talking about. But more importantly, since you D I Y all the time, just start getting into the habit of going in and creating a blog post in your good oiling account, using images from the things that you're D I Y-ing and just writing out those instructions. And, and now when you're out in the world and you're having conversations with people about, I don't know, what, whatever it is that you're doing, maybe like you probably talk about D I Y-ing a lot, right? This is a big part of, of you. And so you can say, hey, I actually wrote a blog post on, on how I did this. If you want the link, I can give that to you. And even if you've only got the built-in theme for get oiling set up right now, when they go to your website, they can pick, they can poke around and go see that you've got wellness products. Right? Like they, they can, they can go get curious about that and then have conversations with you. So I would start with that, right? To start documenting what you're doing so that you can share your life and things that you know that help people. Because it's not about sharing Young Living first, right? It's about opening the door to a relationship, to a conversation that could then become a conversation about Young Living. Does that make sense?
Yes, it sure does. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Yes, absolutely. And thank you for being here today. All right. I have also Susan Johnson. Are you here? Will you please raise your hand for me? There you are. I'm going to bring you out to chat. Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Doing well. Thanks. All right. So you've actually shared a, you've shared a website with me. So what are we, what are we looking over for you today? What kind of information or help are you looking for?
So I have, my website is mostly designed for my health coaching, coaching. It's really not so much for Young Living, although it's a big part of it. I bring people to this for what? For coaching. I have a book that has a separate domain that I'm not. And what I'm wondering is, is there a way to create a page using that domain that I can send people to that domain, but it also links it back to my get oiling?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. What you would do is you would go into that separate domains, domain management. And then you would just, you would point it or redirect it over to your site. I'll show you an example. Here, if I go to Megan is one of my clients. She's a gold leader in Young Living. This is her website. This is how, you know, she finds people, they become her prospects, what have you. She also, so in your case, you have a book. In her case, she has a, a program about healing barns. And, and helping people to, it's, it's basically it's like a ditch and switch course. It's really great, but it's for horses, right? For people with horses and for equine professionals. And so if we go to healingbarnmovement.com, which Healing Barn Movement is the name of her, her program. It's still on her site. If you see it still up here, it's still Megan and Elaine. It's still the same thing. But when she's out in the world, she can share healingbarnmovement.com and it points to a good oiling site. So you would just be setting that up in your, in the domain management, wherever you purchased that other website address.
Okay. And so, and this is where I unfortunately, I'm not really very tech savvy here. So that would point it back to a page. Okay. All right. I get it now. That makes sense.
You would point it to the page, the, the page of your choice on your good oiling site.
Great. Which I can build more design to the book and to program as well. It's a 28-day program and book. So that's good. The second thing I have is that in your contacts, you guys have a list of contacts. Can we create our own type of contact besides other?
Greg, Colin, anybody? Julie? I don't, I'm not sure that I
Type. Yeah. So there's a prospect type field there. So you can, there, there's, you can do it by, like, if you import a file that has the, the prospect type or contact type field in it, it will accept extra values other than the ones that are in there. Most people just use tags. There's no way to edit that field directly and add a new value to it. So.
Yeah, that's fine. It's, I'll have to just use tags a little differently. That's, that's fine. And then I guess my last question to you is that, you know, in some of them I've watched, you know, when you look at this, you look at the page and you see what comes up. You always talk about the top half of the newspaper. You know, what would be your suggestions to make this more grabbing or whatever, you know, what, what would be your thought?
Yeah. Okay. So who's, who's this for? Who's your person?
My person, these are the people that I meet out on the street or whatever. I, I've been in the wellness field for about 27 years. People come to me because they have issues with energy, mobility, digestion, brain and thyroid health. I get most of my, my leads through word of mouth. I've had people go through my program. It's very successful. So I send people here to learn more about me or learn more about the program. And I also run a book club for anybody to draw in leads.
Okay. Oh, I love that. Book clubs are such a great idea to get good leads. All right. So, um, okay. So your, your, your person's struggling with this. What's it keeping them from?
Really healthy living.
How are they talking? How are they talking about it? Cause they're, they're not, they're not sitting around and saying, man, I just really wish I could have some healthy living. Like there, there's a thing that, that has very specific words that's coming up for them. So that's good. That, that's going to lead you like those types of questions are going to lead you toward like, what should I say here? So, and, and I would also encourage you as well to, 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 to narrow down and get more specific, fully color in the, the sort of avatar of a single person that really fits the bill. Now, you know, can you still work with people that you just meet on the street? Yeah, totally. Absolutely. But there's a very specific type of person that you are more uniquely qualified to attract and, and to work with. And you can help them with all of these things. And you've got tons of experience in doing that. But the thing that's going to make them go, ooh, that's for me. Is, and it was kind of similar to what I was saying earlier, right? I can say like, I can help everyone live a better life. That's a, that's a, well, that's nice. Right? But if we can say, you know, I can help you. I can help you finally have more energy so you can chase your kids, right? And, you know, and, and do cartwheels. Think about the things that are valuable to them. I call these currencies. So the things that they're, they're Googling, how to get, do be have these things. Okay. Look at that. Um, you, um, you have people who are, they're Googling, they're following hashtags on social media. They are, they're key words that are important to this person. Now these keywords, these are key words that are important to you. What we need to do is translate these keywords into their language, which to them, I, I mean, again, if you want to focus on what this looks like for them. You know, it is not feeling like they can't go out to eat anymore. Or, you know, having anxiety about traveling because that never goes well, right? Or whatever that thing is, right? I would sharpen that. And, and really speak clear through to that specific person.
And so people come to me because I do elimination trials. I walk them through eliminating food. So they've come to me because they believe that food is the root of their diet, of all their other issues. So they've, they've been told that they have a thyroid problem. They know I work with thyroid. It, it all goes back to, to starting with diet and how all of your lifestyle pieces fit along with that diet.
Okay. So is this someone who, so this is someone who has maybe received a diagnosis already?
Yeah, yeah. Or knows, knows that digestion is probably part of every other issue that they have.
Okay, okay. So, so basically what, what they're frustrated with potentially. And, you know, continue this and, and explore this yourself on, on your own as well. But they're, they're overwhelmed. A primary emotion is overwhelmed because they've got a diagnosis and now they are, they're, they're out in the world trying to find answers. There's a million rabbit holes to fall down. You don't know who's right. And the most important thing is you feel alone and lost. And so even have, so, so having them land here and, and to have it say, welcome. You know, you've just met, you know, the, a partner, you know, like I'm, I am your partner in investigating or I have, I have a client who's, who does functional medicine. I called her a, a P I for your G I. That was really funny. But, but basically, you know, we, and that's, that's a little bit more internal, kind of nerdy. Like we don't go tell our people that. But she works with people who are, you know, who typically have an autoimmune diagnosis. So, so what, you know, what you really want to think about is, you know, what's standing in the way of them figuring out the things that you would help them with on their own, right? And, and those are going to be answers that you want to address here, right? Or that they're overwhelmed. They're frustrated. There's confusing information. And then with the elimination process, maybe they've been told that they need to do an elimination process or elimination diet. Maybe they haven't. And maybe, maybe you hinted that further down the page. The main reason why they're going to breathe a breath of fresh air and be excited to learn more about you when they land here is, is that, you know, they basically, this type of person is showing up and saying, oh, wow, I don't have to look anywhere else anymore. Right? For, for your person. Because if you've, you know, if you're dealing with something that's thyroid or autoimmune, a lot of the stuff that, that you work with in your professional line of work. You, you know, you've, you've, you've got a bajillion different places that you could go and a lot of the information is conflicting. So, so if you can, if you can just basically say, hey, if you're this, obviously we need compliance. If you're sharing Young Living on the same page. Hey, if, if, if you're struggling with this frustration, you don't have to deal with that anymore, right? Like you've, you've just met, you know, your, your partner in uncovering the solution to, you know, to X, Y, Z problem. Right? So I would just, the, the answers here are really going to be what's keeping them from these things, getting it figured out by themselves. And then what are the words they're using, right? Maybe digestion is happening in here as, as a word that they're searching. Maybe digestion is happening in here as, as a word that they're searching. But like as, as just a whole of a, of a thing here. We just think about, you know, kicking fatigue, beating burnout. You know, think about the things they're struggling with. And then I would, I would put that up here at the top.
Okay. All right. Awesome.
Yeah. Just let them know that you've been there or that you're there for them. And then of course, give them a clear way to get a resource from you, right? Put a button. Give it a button.
Okay, awesome.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm excited to see where you go with this. You're really doing awesome work. And I'm always, always excited to see folks who are doing the kind of work that you're doing using Get Oil Link as well, because we're, we're really built to not just support you with your, your Young Living business, but to, to be able to really kind of give you a home for all of it. So yeah, thanks for coming out.
And I'm the one who does the small group. We have a group of 12 of us. Okay, we're not many team. We're all on the Facebook page, but we bring, we come together twice a month just to look at each other's websites and talk about what we want to do and create so that we can take it to the next level, looking at old trainings and things like that. And so I recommend to anybody that's out there to find a group like that from cross-teams, because it really brings in a lot of this kind of expertise. And someone says, oh, I watched this, you know, this week or, you know, I watched this replay and that's exactly what you want to do. So it's super helpful to be on the Facebook page and also have a group to discuss what you found.
I love that. That's brilliant. So you've, you've got Good Oil Link masterminds. If, if you're open to it, definitely share maybe some information. If there's somebody here who would like to do that, or if you have any guidance on kind of creating something like that, put that in our Facebook group, you know, by, by all means. Like we're always excited to see you guys connecting together and growing together. I mean, the most amazing things happen when you do that. So thank you. Like, thank you for doing that and being present and contributing to the community in that way. And I hope to see you on another one of these where we can see the, the new things that you've done with your site. Feel free to work again.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
Awesome. Yeah, it's good to, good to chat with you today. Oh, Paula, she walked up for a moment. She walked back or heard me talking about her. Yes, you guys are actually going to, just for, for those of you who are still here, just a little. In August, y'all are going to learn about a way that you can get done for your resources to, to start teaching essential oils of the Bible classes digitally and in person. So just, if you're here and you're paying attention, get excited. If that's your thing, you're going to love it. And using Good Oil Link resources, plug and play stuff. Paula's a genius. All right. So team, everybody, let's bring a bunch. Valerie, there we go. Y'all, thank you for being Mercedes. Thank you so much for being here with us today. To everybody who stuck around. This is a long one. Appreciate you guys. Bring your teams, come to our Facebook group, connect together, like use, use and share resources together. You know, share what's working for you. And of course, we are here to support you. If you ever have any questions, support at GoodOilLink.com or come and join us on one of these live calls. So thank you, guys. See you next week.